I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, whose stand is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? And if so, are there any changes? If not, a motion to approve. Is the motion to approve?
Move within a few minutes.
Paul moves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason. Any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Actually, I can, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is the bills. Anybody have a chance to look at the bills?
To make the motion to approve the bills.
Nicole makes the motion, is there a second? Second by Paul. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the bills? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the delinquent bills list. Is there a motion to approve? Jason makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Steve is here, do you want to go first tonight? Is everybody okay with that?
I, uh, came tonight to talk to you about a, uh, issue that I became recently aware of. And that's dealing with parking along Forest Street Southwest. We have gravel road that runs along the west side of the county shop. Back towards the softball field there. Got a number of cars that are parking along that gravel road there. And the county can't get in and out of the gas pump area with their semis. Specifically, it's, it's tight with the plow trucks, but it's really tight with the semis. So I've come to the city to ask, um, what the process would be to, uh, put some no parking signs along that stretch of the road, just up to the, the pumps, so they can get in and out of there with their water.
You just need approval from us and then, is the county pay for the signs or are we going to get them?
If, if the city had some no parking signs, that would be great. I'm sure the county would put them up. If not, I could work with the county to try to, to do that. Uh, no parking signs aren't really something the county has a lot of, but if you guys add some, I'm sure that we could get the signs put up.
We might. I don't know for sure, but...
If, if we could do it like this, I can talk to the city guys and if they have some, great. If not, then I guess we'll have to try to figure out.
Where exactly?
Basically, I would say from, uh, at least halfway down. And I'm, I'm glad to think you might as well do that whole stretch of gravel up to where they turn in to go to the gas pump.
You have a lot of parking there, it's not a problem.
That's your point.
Can it be no parking certain days or hours?
They would, we could put no, well...
I don't know how that works over there.
You could put no parking weekdays eight, five, or seven, or whatever their, I don't know what their hours are.
During the summer, when they'd be playing softball, typically they work, uh, four tens. So I'd say seven to five.
It varies, but, I mean, depending on how many people are there, generally it gets in there, it doesn't, most of the time that I've been there, it doesn't get too far back almost. It's a really big tournament.
And, and even so, I mean, I realize they need to park, but in the same token, town's got to be in it all over too.
On that too, I don't know that people park most efficiently in that part either. I don't know how you change it though.
You'd have to put up, call it, where you park.
Yeah, I don't want to make a bigger deal when we do it.
I, I think just find out what they need for minimum grade or you put that, you know, for like seven to five. As minimal as basically they need.
Is it that back gate or the middle one?
It's not even a gate. It sits right there where our pumps are.
So it's maybe half a block?
Yeah.
I, I think if we did, like you suggested, halfway down where the county shop is, to right at the edge of the, the pumps.
Just where they need to go.
Where they could make that, that turn.
We'll go just on the other side of that driveway. Is that close enough there? Is that too far further north than we need?
We could maybe go a little shorter than that, but...
Cause you'd want both sides to get turned in there, correct?
Yeah. One, one, the one side for sure, the far side. I think the other side's already, oh well, down to the, uh, to the south is posted because they got that other gate to get into that test area. So that's already signed down there. That being said, I don't know that they're always paying attention to that either.
And then on dry, if it's wet, they don't park it their own.
When we put up the stop signs over there, those signs cost us about four hundred bucks, so it's not that bad. I just need a motion, you guys approve to put no parking signs in there that, uh, it can be a, we actually could even, if you guys want, take them all from around the school. That aren't fully followed. Along Caldonia, we could reuse those.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind it, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind in talking to the, to the people that use that too. And just kind of see if you could kind of come to a happy medium where everybody's kind of, you know, on the verge of another policy. But I think let's, you know, cause they might say, well, I don't, nobody parks here. I don't know. But I know that I've been out there and it's parked, parked there, so...
And one part on the south side of that gate, the south.
I know recently they've been parked there all the time.
So I just, I just think it's not, I think it's, most best way is a while, if we can wait a week or two to have that phone call. Whoever, you know, that might be, I don't know who that person is out there. It could be Dave or Park Board or it could be...
It'd be Park Board, but, but if, if it's happening now, it's definitely not softball.
I was, yeah, I was just gonna say, is it softball related or not?
People on the park.
Right.
I don't think, I can tell you pretty certainly, they would, they would not have an issue with parking for softball. I've been out there several times and I don't ever remember that before. Oh, once, maybe twice, they've been out that far. Very seldom, as much as I've been there through records.
I'm making the motion to approve what the county shop is in.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Move by Jason, second by Nicole. Any other discussion?
We'll talk, we'll talk to them.
Yeah, we'll still talk to them.
And like I said, they may say there's no problem.
I don't.
It's just kind of recording the minutes.
Absolutely.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries.
Thank you. Oh, would you like me to reach out to the park board and talk to them then, or is you gonna do it?
I can send a message to Nicole and see.
Okay. I'll wait to hear back from you then.
And then I'll let the guys know at the, at the shop if they need to get some air.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else from you or my office?
Can you see about trying to possibly get some parking tickets? Even if they're not tickets, but remind the kids and stuff around the school, cause they're starting to park, still parking, for the hydrants and other places.
Absolutely.
Or all the way up to the corner, which is a lot, so. It's creating a hazard for the kids across the street.
I just managed to jump.
Looks like someone's getting voluntold.
Showed up today. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Remember, I was tonight, I was mine.
Next we'll go to the citizens, anybody addressing the commission tonight? Outside of the agenda? Okay? Uh, go to commissioner's report, so we'll start with Paul tonight.
I'm looking at the media, I don't really know, we're out of electrical, I don't know if you'll follow anything on the substation location if you learn more.
I have not, no.
Still kind of spinning wheels there. Uppication, not a lot going on there. We're still hoping to do somewhat intense, obviously, waiting for it to dry up a little bit. And then economic development, they have a meeting Monday night. Anybody with, uh, any needs or wants from economic development, they need Monday night.
John?
Um, I don't know, Paul, but I think the, the, I already mentioned that stuff and put it over the freeway at the, on the top end of the, uh, make sure we get there, so, uh, there's not, uh, anything doing on the streets, building grounds.
Jason?
Well, our department, obviously, everybody's seen that the ground's been broken, quitting to get laid, um, for Zach. Other than that, he's covered the chair of practice, so...
Nicole?
Um, from the water side, we have, it looks like sixteen applications so far have come in for the wastewater supervisor, um, water treatment plant supervisor. So, uh, KCI and Zach will meet tomorrow to kind of go over what that'll look like moving forward. The airport has their meeting tonight and we're still in discussions back and forth between, uh, the county and the airport on this possessory tax. I need to find a full picture of, of what the, the history is to now and what's changing moving forward, how this came about, so I should hopefully have some information on the next meeting on what that looks like. But, um, my concern in this instance is, um, the airport is a tax exempt entity and if they, according, um, to what I'm, I'm reading so far, is that if it's a long-term lease or something, that it could potentially, that's where, that's, my concern is, who else will that affect as well from the non-tax exempt sides, or from the tax exempt side? So, um, hopefully I'll have like more information that kind of has a little bit more substance to it the next meeting, so... We're still, still talking about that and stuff, so... That's about all I can say on that front, but yeah, nothing else other than that.
How many applicants did you see?
Sixteen so far. Yeah. It's nice to see.
Okay. The pool opening is changed to Tuesday, the twenty eighth at two PM for the re-doal at Witten Park. We do have one bid so far. The twenty eighth. Pushed it back to the twenty eighth at two. On the agenda, if the planning and zoning has approved the substandard building checklist. Also, I think all you've seen the email that came out from planning and zoning about the, they denied a permit. If you have any questions on that, I can, um, definitely try to answer those best I can. But it was denied based on some criteria that they went through on the ordinance, so... Today I got an email from East Central and Neil and he's asking for three things, so I'm hoping to get those, um, figured out. Some of them I can figure out, but some of them you guys need to determine what we want to do. First is the electrical costs associated with the three hundred, three thousand amp, four ninety, two seventy-seven volt to electric service for the new water treatment plant, which we just got the email today from DGR with the total cost estimates. So I'll give them that amount. They also asked for the cost of raw water for the Hillsboro wells and the Hillsboro within the Hillsboro offer. So they would just like to know what we want to sell the water to them at. Easy look to see what we have been, being charged. And it is around... And that's a hard number, Jason. There's a lot of zeros.
Per unit, yeah, there is. It's like fifty cents per thousand gallons.
Yeah, so, it's probably, yeah, it's point zero 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 five five seven or point zero 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 five eight per gallon, so it's five fifty-eight cents probably a gallon, or six...
Seven, yeah.
Per thousand gallons. Is that what we want to sell? Cause that's, uh, when we talked about it, we talked about, instead of them putting more wells into our fields, we would sell the water to them. And so we just need to determine what we are going to charge per, per thousand or per gallon for them. And that rate can, can change, but they at least need a starting rate to start figuring out their numbers, so... Do you guys want to be right at that, say sixty cents per thousand? Nicole, what's your water list?
A lot.
Who's Zach? Can you answer that?
We do, yes. We, we buy a lot now. There, there are a lot of people that are buying, they, 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 they want some capital, they want some capital.
And we've let some out, apparently, I'm like...
It's affordable.
What do they sell, appears to us for that fifty-eight per, oh, fifty-seven cents. That's why I asked you to see them, figure out what it's at, so... Which is the cost of water, cost of, the pumps and all of that, so...
I, I think, would, would the true ups play into that at all? Since we haven't had like the last two, it wouldn't have anything to do with how we calculate what we should be at? Okay.
I don't think we want to get that into that, because that is our solely owned wells that we're...
Oh, those are, okay.
Yep, they're just ours.
Okay, so they're not grabbing anything else additional? Oh, okay.
Does sixty cents sound okay?
Yeah, if that's probably the thing, yeah.
Cause they're not gonna buy for a couple of years, so I'm thinking that it's probably... I think in the contract, it said once a year, would we look at it? But I think they just wanted a starting point, too.
They need water.
They need water.
I mean, they're, they're related to the cost to us, but we're not gonna be handling it or anything with that.
They wouldn't be putting this into play for another, what, two years?
Correct.
So how do we determine what we would do today? This is two years, it could be...
We give a starting point and then I would write in there that we've reevaluated if any factors change out of our control. And we can base it off of also what they're selling at.
Yeah, cause...
So if they have theirs, then we can outguard it.
Two years, right.
They should have, uh, market, uh, later in that road.
Correct.
Yeah, it'd have to be, cause we'd be using it for two years anyway.
And we're trying to negotiate, just, they need a starting point to start getting their numbers figured out. They want to know what are we gonna be by now. I would motion to, um, start at sixty cents and we reevaluate every year in January.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Paul makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Any other discussion?
We should be ready to increase the schedule.
January.
And then we'll do December versus January then?
Did I say February?
This is January.
Oh, meaning that they would go in place of January. That's January, we've done it, we've put on, so we'll add this onto our rate sheet. As bulk water, or as raw water, I should say, not bulk water. Cause bulk water's at a different price. Okay, Nicole? Go ahead, I was gonna ask... On this, yes, but I'm doing this motion first, that would be separate. Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Then the last thing they were asking for was the cost of electric. So I had... Were you able to quote that email that you sent me to the re-sheet that Tim had?
Yes.
Slide... I have a number down here. Thirty. What?
Just look at it.
So we are currently charging eight and a half cents per kilowatt. And then potentially starting in twenty twenty-six, if you guys approve this for the commercial side, they would follow their large commercial over just KW demand charges in June and August and September and May. And then the demand charges would be going up over time. So, um, the offer that I have in play kind of right now is they have up to a hundred thousand dollars that they would be willing to give to us towards the, the upgrade projects and help buy down on some of that improvement that we are going to do outside of what's being done at the plant. So the upgrades at the plant don't count, this would be outside. With that, would you guys be willing to freeze just their rate at eight and a half cents per kilowatt for the next five years?
Nicole, what do you think, increases, it'll get scheduled?
So when I ask Tim to run the numbers, it would run out about even, so we would be okay. But we get a hundred thousand.
I don't know, Paul. How important is that electrical to you?
After the five years, after the five years in an even zone, are we gonna come back and expect a period after that, or are we gonna be allowed to catch up to where it should be?
That would be the expectation that we'd be at whenever we're at that, at that point in time. Or you could say, we'll lock the limit, the three and two demand charge, or something like that.
How was he able to figure that thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, to, to, to...
Based?
Does he already know how much that person is using?
He took it based on what we're currently using at, because the first production line at the plant should be the same. Coming off pretty close. That's what he based it off of. And I started at seven, I gave Tim, I think it was seven or seven and a half.
I'm looking right now.
Unless it was seven, I called Tim.
Seven and a half cent rates.
Seven, yeah, freeze, I said seven and a half and that didn't include the demand charges.
Is it okay with eight and a half?
Neil or?
No, Tim.
I hadn't, I didn't realize it was eight and a half, so that would put us at a better... What I originally said was, well, would it be at seven for fifteen years, just trying to figure out what? They've given some numbers at the start, and then they came back and said, this is what our cost is. And the five years would put us... Um, in a good spot. The benefit for us is that it buys down our power. When we start running with the power out there, our load will be less.
So the top of this building is gonna be bigger than ours now?
I take that back, if they're not gonna be, you know, by the city, so, um, it kind of, it's really, it's really a problem.
And it doesn't matter if you guys don't want to go with that, you wanna, and I'll tell them if this is what we think the rates are gonna be, that's what I'll tell them, um, what they get off for that hundred thousand to help. Do you think, Paul, it's your project?
I, uh, if Tim figures, if Tim figured it out right, it's gonna get balanced out in the end and I'm okay with the hundred thousand dollar in front and eight and a half. As long as it, that long matches in the end.
So what Tim had said was, um... It's about ninety thousand dollars a year. So if we had, they only paid seven and a half, they'd see a bill reduction. That was at seven and a half compared to what we're at now. They'd see a bill reduction of about sixteen thousand, one fifty per year. And so... If we did seven and a half, here it'd see about a hundred and fifty thousand over those first five years. That was at seven and a half, now we've moved it up to eight and a half, cause it, that's what it was.
And that's what you're talking, you figured seven and a half or eight and a half?
Seven and a half. This was at seven and a half, which would bring it down less in farther years.
I think I would start at eight and a half.
Eight and a half and plus the demand charges, and log them in at that for the next five years. Is that a motion for that, Paul?
I'm making that on the move that we did it.
With a hundred thousand dollars, right? That goes to a line. Does she have a second?
Second.
The five years, so up to twenty, twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-six to twenty-two, you want?
That's on...
Twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty... Or twenty thirty, I mean, sorry, not twenty thirty. Twenty thirty.
I was like, we're going backwards, aren't we? Okay.
Twenty thirty.
Okay. Yeah, I'll still sign.
We only guarantee that rate for one year, the other two we don't.
I mean, yeah.
Well, by Paul, seconded by Nicole, is there any other discussion?
Sounds good to me.
And then we'll add that into the contract as well.
Should we have anything, if something should drastically change in our cost side? Is that really kind of a merciful of what he's saying on his rates then? Do you trust that he's accurate enough on that, moving forward five years?
Well, if we have an estimate of how many kilowatt hours they plan to use, we could just build it in based on this estimate. So if it drastically changes from, you said X, but now it's X plus thirty percent, we have to redo our numbers. I could creatively draft something to that extent if needed, so...
Because I think we would say as well as if they had another schedule more on from this first phase, that that would be exempt from this. I assume that your guys' meaning is that this is just for the beginning, buildup. Okay? Any other discussion? And the final, like, the final that's gonna be into the contract, this is, they just wanted some hard set numbers in writing for me to give to them. It's all draft, a letter to them that you guys can look at it as well. Any other questions? Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any questions for me, question here? The DOT I twenty-nine reconstruction on the bridge, Steve let us know that they are bidding that out November seventh. And construction will start in twenty twenty-six, so the northbound I twenty-nine will be done in twenty twenty-six, and southbound is gonna inevitably be scheduled for twenty twenty-seven. And the guard rail on the north and southbound I twenty-nine for pier protection is gonna be added in when they put the bridge in. And the bridge should be going in in twenty twenty-six. And then lights path, all of those. The one thing that you guys will see different is we will not have that free flow. We can't hit ninety going onto the interstate anymore. It's gonna be a right-hand turn going onto the interstate.
Well, now I'm gonna have to leave earlier for work.
Twenty twenty-six, yeah, they're not gonna finish, the bridge will be there, and then they're leaving in here. For the ground to settle, and then they're gonna match up what we had did previously to the, to the bridge. Yes, Nicole, you may have to do a little.
No, I will have to leave earlier.
So it'll be like every other most...
Visualize this, like, in play. We're not crossing the paths of the bike path, or are we?
Yeah, it will be.
As a vehicle, so we need to, like, yield stop.
That's why this, they've changed it to a corner on right here.
Oh, sorry, I made it bigger.
There, thank you.
That's why they've changed that, instead of...
Okay.
At ninety mile an hour, you gotta slow down and turn, because there's faster...
Yeah, instead of being able to go on the outside of it, it's technically an inside cross.
Yep.
Right?
Once you get enough jump at the corner, Nicole, and you can clear the curbs.
Dukes of hazard, it's been done.
Sounds like it. Or you could do like, there's a, there's somebody up by Buxton that has a, taking the fence down, and they jump on the interstate every once in a while. You could do that.
You can meet that person.
All right, that's all I have, so we'll go on to page... Tonight, Zach?
Well, just the next couple weeks, bike protectors will be in town. Can't run any project. And then saving the hostess of the town the next couple weeks to, to those couple months.
Next, uh, JR?
Nothing for me? Casey?
Nothing for me.
Are you okay? No. Usually I have some.
Uh, I gave you enough friendly reminders at the end of the meeting, so you're not getting anything from me tonight.
All right, Sheriff's Department, we already had, and then Steve doesn't have anything from engineers, so we'll go on to new business, which is Miller Alley Greenwich Discussion. Fiona, come on up.
Um, so basically, with Miller's, that alley behind Miller's has been an ongoing issue for quite a few years with us there. And the elevation of how high the alley is, we continue to get water pooling into the store. Anytime we have a hard rain, the potholes back there continue to get larger and larger. We're not the only ones that use the alley. I was here at a meeting several years ago, and we found out that it's the property owners and the business owners that own the alleyways here in town. I tried to reach out to Mr. Zink, the gentleman that owns the apartment building across the way, to see, you know, any type of issues that he has over there. But we've kind of been putting it off for many years, and so we had Nosteds come in and survey it. Provided the information to Casey last week, but it's a substantial amount of money that we have to do to get the alley graded down, to hopefully stop, well, it will stop the water from pooling in the back of the store, the south side of the store, it's kind of making it an inconvenience, you know, for customers. We have to open late and clean up water quite regularly. So just seeing if there was money out there to help with this project through the city. I already reached out to the EDC, we have used the structural grant already. Said there's a utility one, but not sure if anything like this would qualify. So just seeing what we can do on our end, if I have to get the property owners then, and say the vets club and everybody else there to, to sign up on this project, because obviously they own a portion of the alley as well. And this is gonna start kind of in our dumpster area and go all the way to the south, you know, to fix, to fix it, I guess, grade it down, and get it to the level where the water won't keep pooling into the store in, in run to the south of it there. So, yeah, I guess that's the my, uh, main concern, I guess, and just seeing if there is funds out there that's available to help us out with the project. Because we'd rather be putting this money back into the store and expanding, you know, the services to the customers, but this is gonna be a large amount of money for us over there to, to get the repairs done. We're not the only one that use the alleys, so I, you know, I don't know if they would wanna help, you know, kick in for this, but we've had trucks get hung up there, we've had vehicles get hung up down there. And that's out there, and trying to, to get up, you know, the hill that comes up there and such, so, yeah. I guess that's my reasoning for being here tonight.
You're starting at the north end of the road, first there on the south.
You wouldn't be starting in the north end, you're just starting like your downstairs.
Correct, yeah.
In the north end of your building?
Yeah.
Yes, yep, and going down the south.
Don't the trucks go all the way through and back into your loading truck?
Sometimes they do, but there is some that will come up from the south. I mean, the majority of them don't because of the issue, and we've had several vendors now actually coming to the front of our door, you know, in front, you know, front, which is an inconvenience for customers as well. But because of the potholes are so ginormous back there, and, you know, we had the city haul in, you know, and try to fix some of the potholes too, but that obviously, you know, only fixes minor. And again, that's why I feel like where we built, you know, the alley is sitting obviously up so much higher compared to this store. But there have been some minor repairs that we've had to do, but it's just we can't keep putting it off because it's, it's a lot. I don't know if anybody ever tried to get in there after a big substantial rain, but it's, it pretty much floods through two aisles of the store coming in off that, that back alleyway on the northwest corner. And then the whole west side there.
Moving this there, this is not to be got, but they threw that away a couple times.
I'm just having it back there.
So, when the, when Dakota, I think it was Dakota Heritage and the Vets Club, they, not too far from this time, didn't they, didn't they break that up and put concrete all the way across there? Or did they only do part of that?
They did to their part, but we made sure, I sent you that today, the, the map that was done, we made sure that they matched elevations, so that if there was any issues, they had to us said this is where we need it to be. So their concrete is matched, so it's not...
So it's not a runoff, okay.
So that did get me into, but, because that was back in twenty twenty-three, we had Steve come out and look at block twenty-seven and do the survey about two years ago from next month, so, um, he had sent us that. Unfortunately, it's not a dedicated city alley, so that hinders our, what we can do. If we were to do it, then that opens up a can of worms, because now we just start digging for everybody's. The only process we could do potentially is to look at assessing those property owners that would be affected, and we would put it on as specials, but there still would be a cost to it. Correct, JR? And then we'd have to get sign off from those owners before we did anything.
And that's what we're wondering, I mean, before we can even put a shovel to it, we're gonna have to, you know, get...
And even if you paid for the whole thing, you would still have to get approval from those property owners?
Right, yeah.
But we don't have any funds set aside for those types of projects. Except we could, we could assess it to those that are advantaged for it, but other than that, there's not. And then it's still paid off in six, ten, or fifteen years. We'd have to get that homeowner on the north, or on the east side, the...
I'm not sure.
Either the west side, I mean, the one more on the west side.
Yeah, well, our concrete is all busted and everything coming from that south side there.
Yeah, because, because a lot of people to go in that way, there's a store, they come up there, you just hit two arrows, the drive, driveway on that, and doors. But there, there is a big dip in the, right there, and it's, you know, broken up and everything. It's still in the incline, they both, basically, you're right, your cars don't go that way, they come in those two driveways. But the people that own the trucks and everything, at the high carriage and everything, they come up in that one. So basically, on the alleyway, and they're, they're receiving dog, it's on the north side of the building.
So you could, uh, are you, if this, you were to do this, are you planning on cutting off the access from that alley into the parking lot?
It's a...
I mean, the option that you guys can do without any, anybody else would be to put a drainage to the street from that, from your area, dig a pipe underneath and put it in. A drain tile pipe that went from the store back so that it would drain them. That would require anybody else.
Okay.
Because it'd be on your side of the property, the only issue would be potentially if there's any, I think there's is there natural gas buried down the center? So you'd have to stay closer on your side of the property and pull it out. Something in this area. But otherwise, I mean, if you wanted us to look at getting the rain involved, like I said, we could do the, that was kind of one we talked about a couple of years ago. Same, very tall.
That was probably one of them.
Yep. We can help facilitate, like we said two years ago, but I, we can't really do much else legally. Correct, JR?
It's private property, that's the problem.
You could do a grant for it, yes, if you had funds for it, but then it would apply, anybody, Paul would apply for it.
Pretty much anywhere in the alley.
Now, that's a real hard part, isn't it, you guys know now, apartment building needs to have?
I mean, if you guys decide and want us to help facilitate, we can send out letters and notices to the tenants and say, and the property owners, and so this is what the cost would be. I think you, is it fifty percent? Or what, if they protest? What is that?
I'd have to look, I'm trying to remember, fifty percent sounds right, but might not be, might be twenty-five percent.
Either fifty or twenty-five percent protest, then you can't do the project, but if you have enough, and you are able to do the project, and then we assess it. So you could even, because I know that one time the Vets Club was interested in doing it. And then can we do that if it's private property, we can't, individuals?
I mean, that's what the owners are saying.
Can we involve and do the specials or anything? It's not like it's a street project.
Oh, I see what you mean.
What do you think, JR?
It's something I'd have to look into, that's for sure. It's, it's gray area.
I didn't think about that.
There's an ease of that you through their company, and the city of Hillsborough would have put our electric and water back there decades ago.
Right.
I think this followed our previous easements that we had.
Yep.
You have to find page two.
I'm not sure where that one, that's in, that's electrical, but. That wouldn't have much. Any other questions for us?
No, I'll just reach out to Jeff and then let Casey or Nicole know then, I guess, or if we wanna.
We do.
Send up the lines or.
What did EDC, what did they come to go with that?
Well, we have used the structural, the structure grant. He said there is a utility grant, but that was, were like, basically.
Water sewer, electric and gas repair.
Kind of chiming back and I go, well, this is a water issue, so maybe, and he did say that, when I talked to him, or emailed him this morning, Dustin, that he would bring it up, you know, to EDC, because he had said water in there and I go, oh, this is a water issue, water just being pooled into the store. So, yeah, I mean, that might be out there for us.
Maybe if you did a drainage, you might get a little bit of money out of that.
So are you looking at somebody to help share the cost a little bit, or you're looking at something that's a painful thing, or what kind of?
Well, just to help share the cost, because, I mean, obviously, there's multiple businesses and homeowners that use that alley, but yeah, I mean, that's.
I, I would recommend, I would recommend pleading your case, they, their funds are a little more flexible than the city is. You know, if you take, and the cost you take that.
Right.
And they just, they meet already with that funding, so.
And as far as the, the property owners in the alley, then you guys could help with the letters or I should just continue to try and reach out?
I mean, I suppose the only other thing you could do is potentially, we did still have to get proper owners to turn it over to the city as an alley again and then dedicate it as an alley, correct? And dedicate it as an alley. At some point it got undedicated as well.
Yeah, at some point.
Or never was, I'm not sure.
Never was, the original city plat. I don't know why, but the person who did that is dead now, so.
I think there was some confusion many years ago.
Yeah.
All right, I guess, yeah. Well, thank you.
Thank you. That's good.
See you.
For coming.
Yeah, thank you.
The next item we have is a sports pool rafting board for the HCB baseball team. There's no questions.
I'm moved to approve the sports pool rafting board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second hand. Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any ask for me? We have discussion about offering outdoor water use meters. In twenty twenty-six, we've had some residents that have expressed interest in, in that. They felt like our sewer charges that have went up, there's no way for us to differentiate between the two. So when they use water, that's what the base of our sewage rate is off of. So we talked about if the only way we could potentially do it, now with another technical makes it easier, but I believe it's the cost of the homeowner to put the meter in, and then we would charge the difference that goes to the, from the first meter to the second meter, it's only on sewer, not on water use, so they'd still pay the same amount.
No additional meter to, to that second year? Would, would we, one more, one meter?
Well, they gotta pay for the meter. And it's their meter.
Yeah, meters are a nice, honest thing to replace the cost.
They have to replace it. It's their meter. Anything goes wrong with it, it's their meter.
But you're able to monitor?
Yeah, we're able to do type in for our system. It'd be like an off key.
Yep, and then the software would use the traction to assess what the sewer use would be.
I don't think there's enough, like, usage for us to try to pay the cost of it.
If we put a meter in, we'd be able to make savings for the sewer, you know, that's about it. I just, you know, replace the cost. If they're responsible for replacing like those.
All those lung sprinklers?
Thoughts on that?
Going off in the lungs, turning them things on. Let it grow.
Papa?
That's my thought, they're willing to pay for it. She has an obligation with it, if I have a tech, I would see a problem with it. I'm asking the homeowner, there's something I'm not seeing.
What's that?
A meter and, and always in ten hours, you know, three hundred fifty four.
Right, and technically are they gonna say we're only have a meter on for three, three months, four months?
Depends on summer, but.
Right.
We would, we would just continue to revolve all the meter on.
All your. Which then, you charge a forty dollar meter fee, so then, or do you charge less, and how do you, what's the lifespan on it?
Yeah, you, you, you know, it could be about forty bucks a month, but meter fee, I don't think you're gonna pay that, depending on how much you're watering, it's gonna be up every year.
Right.
So much water, uh, maybe it's a state number, but the sewer looks off your waters. How many people do irrigation out there?
A lot of the homeowners have, not, it's not a high number, but.
Between, between irrigation and swimming pools, we had a few phone calls this summer about the sewer rates, so.
The one that would probably see the biggest benefit is the school. And the irrigation. But.
I would, I would think restricted irrigation, not all those tickets, because that's just kind of.
Yeah, yeah, just irrigation. So. So the meter. They have to figure that out.
The house, houses?
Yeah.
No, they have to use the.
They would have.
Usually they have the, 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 the irrigation systems, like this.
So we would charge the cost of the meter and they're responsible for it in, and the meter is theirs, we just need to be able to read the difference. The price is still whatever the price is for water, just minus the. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'm moved that we do that, that the, the meters, the owner can decide if they own meters, that's their cost, have to install it and pay for all the plumbing.
End of report.
Yeah, they're very responsible for it to fail.
Oh, oh.
What if, what if the homeowner don't want that meter on there?
That they don't need it.
And they pay what they're paying right now.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by John. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any ask for me? Need a motion to, for the second reading of the re-zoning, all subdivided for this fancy plat right here. Do I have a motion to approve?
No motion.
I'm moved to approve the re-zoning, the George also divided.
From an R one, or R two, R three? Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Nicole, moved by Paul. Any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any ask for me? Motion to hear you. Substandard building checklist. Funding and zoning, approve that. Everybody have a chance to look at it, if you're okay with it? This is what they would use on the very first one that we had a complaint for. Down at the, the old theater. Just so you understand how it works. Everything refers to ordinance in section one and section two of chapter ten, oh four of the dangerous building. And JR has looked at this. Any violations that's in A, B, K, N, or O? Any one of those would automatically make it a dangerous building. Three or more violations in any section, so if it's like A, one, two, and three, that would make that section as a, as a fail. And then if there's three or more sections that are outside of the A, B, K, M, and O that are, then that would be considered a dangerous building as well. So if it was M, J, and I, it would be considered a dangerous building.
So from, from this checklist, is it just something that is done if, like, a complaint is made, or?
Correct, so if this doesn't automatically do it, it just gives the building inspector a checklist to go through, they can look around at it, assess it, and then from that point, bring it to the city commission and say, this is what we found, we can now move forward on the process. We have a document that says this is a dangerous building based off of large city ordinances. Instead of before, we had the building inspectors come in and they wrote up, had to look through the code, this was what other, some of the communities have done, so this helps us as a checklist. But it's all based on what a complaint.
Okay.
So we're not gonna start going around and home, just gonna start looking, unless there is a complaint. Three or more violations in any section shall be considered a fail for that section. Three or more sections that are. Yeah, should be a fail, should be a failure.
Another community that uses this type of checklist, however, this time?
Yes, this came from another community, I can't remember. There was some were out there, I don't remember this one exactly. And we revised it, some of it's the same, some of what we added in, some of it we took out. It looks okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'm moved, uh, you said a substandard building checklist, approved by, by me?
Is there a second? Moved by Paul, seconded by John. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any ask for me? The handbook, everybody has a chance to look at it, we don't have to finalize anything, it's just working document, everybody keep moving through it.
One thing I'd like to see, people have got more, in the E and K's, you've talked about wages, wage awarding.
I'll try to find it.
Thirty-four, I believe.
Yeah.
Highlighted section here.
Yep. So I guess my question was, and I'll just bring it up for a point of conversation, is if it says there that if you, let's say we're at seventeen and we go to twenty-one, well, that's a four dollar increase, so if we do that, that's gonna, is that gonna mean that even our supervisor with him, that are already getting thirty bucks an hour, thirty-four bucks an hour, they also are gonna be increased by four bucks, four dollars an hour? Or is it more for other employees?
My personal opinion is that shouldn't even be in there. I wouldn't put it in there, but that's just me because.
What, okay.
Well, the one goes up, everybody goes up by that amount because it really.
I think when this was put in there, it was a lot different circumstances than it was right now.
It was, so.
Yeah.
I don't see a problem, you know, entertaining what you said.
It was, when this was put in the plate, we had, like, we hired, we hired Jay. They said, well, what does everybody else have? And so we had John Ham, who had been here for thirty years, and he was at twenty-two dollars an hour, and we hired Jay at nineteen, and I think it might even happen to his act too, like when he started. They, we got, they got put in and we forgot about the other, the other guys, and when we were giving raises, it wasn't cleaning out. We got somebody that's been here for thirty years and they're making the same.
Do we have these wages on the application, you know?
We don't, um, reason being is that in the event an applicant asks what you are offering, you can lean back on your policy, or your, excuse me, your employee handbook and say, we don't have a set wage, but per the handbook, we're starting at this for this position.
I mean, that's usually the general HR way to do it.
So what I'm hearing on this yellow is to take that section out?
I mean, that's just my opinion.
John?
Jason?
Yeah, I think take it out.
Paul's, so, we'll take it out. Is there anything else, Paul?
We just, then we're gonna, is it twenty-one and eighteen, that's where we wanna leave the rules, or you can take that whole section out?
I think we still leave those.
Just, just the yellow.
Our starting salary.
Yeah.
So we are gonna change the rules.
If that's what you guys want.
Well, that's, you wanna change it better.
Well, we're not, I assume that you guys want it, because that's what you had said before.
Yeah.
We're just taking out the yellow section.
Yeah.
We're not approving everything, like, we're just making changes and we'll let the rest of the staff look at it, and then once you guys feel that, okay, I don't think we have any more big changes, we'll approve it.
And the one other thing that we talked about, what's gonna take, was a year or two, is the uniform allowance, we talked about it last time, and they would give a price, and I think she did research some of those costs, and I just felt it would be nice if the herd actually happened, all the figured if she could tell the people, you know, that's the limit, I used to do for things, with clothing.
What's actually, what pays for?
Here I found it, um, let me tell you. It'll be page twenty.
My two questions are on like the, the winter and the light jackets. That's like having a light jacket and the next year heavy one, the next year light and next year heavy. Do you really go through that many jackets?
Our current public works kind of, you guys kind of play it by ear, but there's, there's a few that will purchase.
Kind of tear through those, or?
Maybe one or two, or, or separate ones, uh, depends on what you're doing, but the jacket works, you know, I'd say a couple of years on the jacket.
Yep, for how much you guys are in and out of holes and working with grease and all that.
And especially for a high-end jacket, it doesn't take long for it to not be.
The fade?
Because you can only wash them like eight times? Because you can only wash them like eight times?
Yeah. They fade in the high-end part.
Do you like?
Sorry, we get those too.
It's kind of been up to the person wanting, a lot of them are on the road, the people that's busy.
I think.
You know, our office got, they were going through, I think, work for, work for safety or something like that.
It is kind of nice when you have some options, you know, where you're going to put that.
Are you guys okay with the maximums on there?
I definitely know some of them, like the boots, they, are good quality boots, they cost some money. Same with the coveralls, too, to be warm with.
So what, I've seen it work both ways, you've seen, when you start putting the maximums out there, that's what I'm doing, if I see a maximum, I'm going.
And spend the large dollar, yeah.
That's what people do, if the system's not being abused and we're not spending money all over the place, I think the current system's looking fine. Because that's what I see when people, we don't have it, but I spot the other agencies, and they have numbers set out, I guarantee you, every one of those people will spend that out to the, to the last dime.
That's a devil's advocate, no way, though, let's say, we get that into a town, you have t-shirts, you get, they're fifteen shirts, I mean, that's pretty cheap, they wouldn't necessarily be able to buy five of them.
If you put the max of fifteen per shirt, so, maybe able to get five, at seventy-five dollars.
Budget that every year. I'm not saying that's fifteen.
No, I, I know what you're saying, but I'm, I'm just saying, to hold the advocate to the dollars being put on it, what I have seen in companies and businesses that put dollar amounts like that is, the employees go and make sure they get every penny worth of what they can. What if we, instead of this, said we have a five random nerd budget? And if it's spent, it's spent. If we say we're gonna put six thousand, or five thousand, or whatever it is in the line item with the budget?
Once it's gone, it's gone.
Once it's gone, it's gone.
Could that, if it wasn't spent, it could carry over and still continue to build? No?
Could, yeah.
If you have it in its own separate fund, it could carry over, like, if you just create that, but. Or otherwise, it just kind of resets every year? Typically, yeah, it'll reset every year. Unless you guys choose to amend that, and let's say if you set a six thousand dollar budget, four thousand is used this year, and you want to say, well, they didn't spend two thousand dollars this year, let's just put it on next year's, you know, line item, you can amend that if you want to. Oh, okay. Yeah, but it, it wouldn't automatically roll over if you don't make. Didn't demand it, okay, I got you.
Do you have an idea where you're going to start with that?
And after, in the event you guys kind of wanted to stick with these roundabout prices, we could take all of these, time, however many public works employees there are, and, you know, go that way, it's tough because these guys are so good about buying their clothing, you know, it's not, it's not a standard purchase, how many shirts can you say you bought this year, Zach?
About five.
You bought five? Okay. Okay.
That's, that's why I want to. Be like, uh, safety stuff, though, I mean, you don't want people going three, four years, going to get.
Well, I think that's where it's gonna be internally, that Casey can say, go stick on Zach, Zach's bought fifteen shirts, well, we're not gonna give him any more shirts, we're gonna give it to Jay, because he has not one for a year.
And say, he'd, he'd be my next one, how many shirts does Jay even buy? I never, I don't think he does. He still wears. I don't think he does. He still wears the same light jacket, because he loves it, he doesn't want to get a different jacket, so, and he's had that for a few years, so it, you know, it's not, it's not consistent amongst all the public works employees, you know. Some of the rules you're jumping down.
My opinion, you guys can have your own opinions, but if it's unbroken, fix it, I think what's working is working.
But in, but in that same token, is if, let's say somebody does come in and they want to pay their employees for three hundred and fifty dollars, what does she say? This, this at least gives you a maximum, I think we have, well, perfect example, like you said, Jake, I don't think we have anybody, even if it was three hundred, and I'm not gonna say that they wouldn't, but I don't think that our fool is gonna, is, would be the type of people that would abuse it, but I also, I also want to have a maximum, because it kind of gives her an idea, which you budget her by these numbers, she kind of knows, well, this is what we're gonna kind of budget for each year, because that's what we have in there for a maximum, I don't, I don't think that we have, you know, using, and, but, and in case you did, you have.
And I, I've seen it a couple different ways, too, like, I've seen it where companies have given each employee a certain amount to spend, and you can't go over that, that, like, that's their allowance, basically, right? And like, where I work, we get one free piece every year, like, we get to pick and choose out of these, but if I want anything additional, then I pay for that out of pocket, and so I've seen it done many different ways, um, it's just where you want to go with this from.
The biggest thing.
What they like and budget.
The biggest thing with this is we're requiring them to have five minutes, so that's what we're going to wear, so that's.
I agree with it. I think they need that.
Or the fire resistant part of it.
Nicole, you want to see? What are your thoughts, what do you prefer, because you'll have to deal with it when somebody comes in and wants a.
Would you like employee allowance?
Hundred and fifty dollar jacket. Forty-five dollar t-shirt.
I.
You have the money, I'll just give the person his name, but I guess, if you want anything in order, you can.
I, I don't mind the comment that Levi made, where we just have a single line item, you know, that is going to encompass. Probably easier to keep track of, I suppose. Yeah, I think so, just because, like, let's say, let's just focus just on the public works section, where it's five shirts a year, uh, winter jacket, light jacket, boots, coveralls, just that alone, that'd be eight fifty per employee, um, you take that time, so you guys got six employees there right now, looking at seven, though, at least, so that's gonna be fifty-nine fifty for the year, if you've got it from that point of view, so if you, you know, put it up to six thousand, that's an easy number to work with, and it would have a dedicated line item, so you guys could track it, you know, years down, they're a little easier, and it wouldn't come out of a maintenance and supply line item, so, which is where a lot of stuff does come out of, so, I don't know. I'm gonna be okay.
What happens if we have an off year where three or four of those jackets get wrecked and destroyed, we gotta replace them, and you have funds?
Then we probably just bring it to the commission to talk about and.
We'd have to bring that to the commission and amend that budget for that year. And move funds around.
I mean, ideally, you hope that they won't destroy their jackets, which I don't think any of you guys even come too terribly close, but, yeah, not essentially. Yeah. But yeah, that's exactly what they said, you'd have to bring it back here, discuss it, make a motion to, put some dollars around if needed, so.
So, John, do you want the numbers on, or the maximums off, or would you rather see the budget, or leave it the way we had it?
Yeah, you could, it's like, the line item in the budget would be different than maybe the ones on. It would be sixty-six thousand, sixty-five hundred.
It's a line item?
Line item.
Jason? I prefer to just leave it what it is. Nicole?
I'd say line item.
Paul?
I like this way. I guess I look at it, you have a line item, most definitely, if they take these numbers and use them for the line item, right? So, it's basically the same thing, it's just a matter, you know, to me, to me, it's important that, it's more important to me that, that they have good clothes, that doesn't look like reds and so on and so forth, and that they, and that they have good visibility and stuff like that.
Do you put the wording, like, not to exceed six thousand dollars per year, then? Or, because like you said, if someone buys the boots, that's three hundred and fifty.
I would agree with the line item, Casey wants to have some kind of like this internally for herself, to approve or not approve, I think that would be okay. And then if we have ones that don't ever buy anything, she can just say, what size are you, and we're buying shirts.
Right.
Time to get a new pair of boots, time to get a new coat right now.
Okay, so I think that's, so. So everything of just giving the line item, then, through this coming budget, see if that works, anything gets it to be give, to be give, but I just, I don't think we should fix the dollars, dollar numbers.
Yeah, just leave that, leave that off, and then put the line item, yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be a line item, and she can have internally these numbers, not within the handbook.
We can do that.
Anything else?
I didn't see anything else that I had any questions on.
Zach, what's your preference?
Um, I guess the way it is, it's worked your way, and it hasn't, I would say, picking up those numbers, it's supposed to never been, it's supposed to cut as far as, everybody kind of gets along, and I don't know. We're offering to.
Right. Yeah, you know.
We'll keep looking at it, there's no other big changes, Casey? Would you?
Sorry, on that first thing all day, we need to be better worded, to be an employee mid flex, is there your first thing, Paul, if anyone's been clear? Like, who do you want?
Twenty-five?
Can you get your birthday off, Jr.?
Do I? No.
I don't, can you get your birthday off?
I don't even get my Monday nights off.
I'm just curious. That's the best of the other nice people.
That's what they're.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Not there.
I don't either.
My last birthday, I spent it on stroke. I don't know that it's.
It's really weird, because like, some banks were and some weren't this year.
I'm not sure.
You guys are lucky, because like, I, I don't get any of these days off, and I'm public and to be too. Hiring. Yeah, maybe I need to apply.
Also, did you speak on the state?
Well, it wasn't that kind of.
In the last couple of years, we've been under rocks.
Get to this.
Or under cars. So, pretty much it is.
Rather hide away and go, please don't notice.
Flexibility is.
Flexibility.
It is, but flexibility is.
It's flexibly.
Flexibly, yes. Flexibly, so they.
Flexibly.
Flexibly, yes. So. Casey, would you make sure to, within, before the November, the second meeting in November, have all the, all of the employees look at the handbook and make any final suggestions before we approve?
Yep.
And tell them, no big four-page changes, or it might be five years from now, before we get Paul to sign off on it. Okay. Some reminders, Veterans Day is November eleventh, the office is closed, Thanksgiving holidays is the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, pool is closed, and then, we gotta wait until the November third is our next meeting. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Next time Cole's in charge of popcorn. It's wonderful in here.
I cannot feel my nose.
You gotta wear longer sleeves here, let's. Do I have a motion to? You got my neck warm.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Moved by Nicole, seconded by John, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Meeting ends.